Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 2nd, 2024 meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. If I could ask everyone just take a moment and silence their cell phones. Please note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. Take a moment to introduce members of the board, starting at the audience's far left. This is Jerry Potamis, who is an associate member. Frank Duffy, who is a full voting member. Mark Fineran, who is a full voting member. My name is James Morse. I'm currently serving as chair. Suzanne Murphy, who is our clerk. Scott Peterson, who serves as the vice chair. Tony Petrucci, who is an associate member. We're also joined this evening by Noreen Stockman, the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, our recording secretary. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow for a full and fair discussion of a project prior to closing the hearing process. To begin any sharing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's attorney will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only at the project and conclude an opinion in favor or opposition or to ask a question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. The microphone does not amplify your voice, but it is provided for the benefit of FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that it has enough information to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board will then discuss the proposal amongst themselves, then make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. Approval requires the vote of four members to approve a special permit or variance. Any zoning board appeal decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A. First up on this evening's agenda is public comment. Does any member of the public wish to make a comment about anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Jillson Bower, and I am an architect in Falmouth. I'm here tonight to make a recommendation to enhance your submittal requirements that I believe would be exceedingly helpful to your board, the planning board, and the community. A successful building must be designed in context, and it can only be understood and reviewed in its context. If the boards required a more specific set of drawings, you would be positioned to review the building well, the community would better understand the proposed building, and its impact from the beginning. Your current list of required drawings makes no reference to context. The photographs and drawings I recommend that the planning board and zoning board require for submission for all non-single-family homes are photographs of the neighboring buildings, satellite view of the site with neighboring buildings and natural features, large-scale site plan with all adjacent neighboring buildings located, your site survey, then precedent images if there are relevant building types. The drawings that you currently require are plans and elevations, but expand that requirement to include elevations in context with adjacent buildings, sections through the proposed building and through adjacent buildings with those heights estimated, three-dimensional views from the neighbors' point of view and from the street, everything from the eye level so that people will understand and the boards will understand from the beginning of what it will look like, a materials board, and a lighting fixture specification. I would welcome the opportunity to work with you to create this list of new drawings and graphic material. I want to stress, this list is easily generated by any contributing developer or architect. It is not a burden. When we design buildings, we design and create those buildings and drawings in context. Requiring these drawings will speed up the review process because the buildings and its impact would be more fully understood from the beginning by your board and the people, and it would be more efficient in the time savings and money for the developer. So it's my recommendation that the planning board and the zoning board establish a new and robust list of required submittal drawings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other people, any other persons wish to make any public comment? Next up, we have continuations. We're going to take three things out of order. I believe we have requests for continuations. So 01524, remain 45 Toby Lane, East Falmouth. We have a request to continue to June 27th. Is there a motion to continue to June 27th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Let us continue to June 27th. I believe we have a continuation sheet. Request for continuance on 09223 Kim, 0 Stowers Street, Lot 22T ticket. Request to continue to June 27th. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Let's continue to June 27th. And under new hearings, 02624 Urban, 15 Ravenwood Circle, Falmouth. We have a request to continue to June 6th. Is there a motion to continue to June 6th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fineran, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Let's continue to June 6th. Next up, what are continuations? 02324, Serial 426 T Ticket, Highway East Falmouth, requesting a special permit for Do we have anyone here for him?
We didn't get any drawings either.
No. How would the board like to proceed? Noreen, do we have any correspondence from the applicant about why they're not here or not going to be here?
We did speak with them on the phone today.
Okay.
I don't know if there was a misunderstanding about the time and the end of the agenda.
Call them at the end of the list. Jerry?
Okay, you can call them at the end of the...
Yeah, we'll step it back to the end of the night.
You can't continue without them being here, so at best we could do a table.
They'd have to be continuing to a date certain, otherwise we could deny it without prejudice. But, all right, we'll call that at the end. Next up, 08423, Falmouth Resort Owners LLC, 350 Quaker Road, North Falmouth. Modification of existing special permits to construct four duplex structures over the existing tennis court and convert a portion of an existing office building into additional units.
This thing's thick. We have a lot, we have a lot more letters, and I assume it's in here. We have 87 letters in opposition. Correct? That's all we have here?
That's all.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Flower. I am attorney here in town, and I'm the fore-tentative representing the applicant's Falmouth Resort Owner LLC, the owner of the Seacrest property, which is located at 350 Quaker Road. I'm joined tonight by Jay Sheldon, the general manager of Seacrest, as well as Kevin Klein from StanTech. As has been discussed at the two prior hearings, we're seeking to alter the existing developed property and modify the existing special permits. Currently, this is operated as a 253-room hotel with associated restaurant and function space. We're proposing four duplex-style buildings located at the northern end of the parking lot, an alteration of a portion of the existing building into an additional unit, which is a total of nine new, nine new units. While we have been at this for some time, this is only the third actual hearing, I'd like to offer a brief recap of what it has been since January that we were here. So this was initially presented in October. Following that meeting, the applicant worked to revise the plans, specifically relocating the larger deck, rear deck, to the front of the building, reducing the lighting. Following the next hearing in January, we engaged with counsel for the abutters, seeking to address the concerns of the association which he represented, with revisions to the plans and conditions that would be amenable to both sides. Those plans were revised further, eliminating all decks of the rear building, the rear of the buildings, leaving only the egress stairwell, which is required by code, and significantly decreasing any lighting located back there. We agreed to a prohibition of pesticides, fertilizers, and the like in that area, prohibit outdoor gathering spaces behind the proposed buildings. We agreed to remove the existing fire pit behind the cottage, and we also provided information from StanTech to address concerns about wastewater, specifically that the system runs far under the capacity that it's permitted for. Those talks with the association lasted until just prior to the next scheduled hearing in March. At that time, we were informed the association was no longer willing to negotiate, and that Attorney McCormick was no longer engaged. We had been proceeding in good faith and reliance on these representations. We're very surprised by this turn. However, the applicant's still willing to keep all those conditions that were agreed to, and also to keep the plans as revised, with the rear decks eliminated. The scheduled March hearing was continued because there was an unavailability of board members that night, which brings us to this evening. So I've reviewed the correspondence that's been submitted by the applicant, by the abutters, rather, and by Attorney Hury. I've received a copy of Attorney Hury's letter, which was submitted to the board on Monday. I do have to admit some level of frustration as I spoke with Attorney Hury in March. Shortly after Attorney McCormick was relieved, I certainly understand we all have lives, but correspondence submitted three days prior to a hearing is challenging because I'm effectively prohibited from responding. In addition, we've tried to reach out a number of times in an effort to address the remaining concerns, and we were told there's no interest in further negotiating regarding the project. Putting that aside, I want to address the letter, the points raised in both his letter and the letters from many of the abutters. First and foremost, much of this discussion has revolved around the idea that this is a change or expansion in a non-conforming use in an area that is zoned for residential use only. That's simply not the case. Commercial accommodations isn't allowed use, both in the B3 and the business, and the residential zoned areas, by special permit. Therefore, it is not a non-conforming use. The existing use as commercial accommodations has been allowed by a number of existing special permits. All the permits that have been issued have allowed commercial accommodations specifically. The 1968 and 1972 permits were granted under Section 21 of the then-existing bylaw, which specifically dealt with commercial accommodations. The 1982 special permit was granted under Section 3366A1, which also allowed for expanded commercial accommodations, specifically the correspondence who flexed 266 units at that time. It was offered that multiple structures aren't allowed under Falmouth zoning. Again, this is incorrect because many properties, commercial and residential, have multiple primary structures. We have condominiums with 10-plus buildings, we have marinas with nine-plus buildings, we have shopping plazas with three, five, seven, nine, 10 buildings, and yes, hotels, which are permitted under commercial accommodations with multiple billing, buildings, including, off the top of my head, Falmouth Heights Motor Lodge, the Heights Hotel, and the Mariner Inn. It was noted in Attorney Hury's correspondence that the tennis court has been abandoned. It's questionable. The zoning bylaw defines a tennis court as a structure. We're not questioning that the use has been discontinued, but the structure remains. Tennis court is comprised of different materials and construction from pavement. It's not just parking pavement. It is, I went there today, it's very clear where the tennis court is, it's very clear that it's different materials. The structure itself has not been abandoned. The power chakran test that is cited is also not applicable. It's a test used to examine a change or expansion in a non-conforming use. As has discussed, the use of this premises as commercial accommodations is not non-conforming. It isn't allowed permitted use. The only aspect of the application that is non-conforming is the setback of Building One to the four-foot contour of the tidal waters of Buzzards Bay. That's the only building affected by the non-conforming setback, which is an improvement over the existing tennis court location. Other proposed buildings comply with setback and lot coverage requirements. If necessary, we could relocate Building One such that it was compliant with the 50-foot setback there. It's stated in Attorney Hury's letter and throughout many letters that it's well-known that Seacrest has a history of noise complaints. The records from the police department show five complaints in the last five years. Only one of those complaints was made by an abutter for an activity at Seacrest. Three were informal, an alarm clock going off that they couldn't access, someone on the beach disturbing someone in a room, and someone who was sleeping with their door open complaining about someone in the hallway speedtalking. One was for a lot next to Seacrest. In addition, the applicant's already agreed to remove the fire pit behind the existing cottage, and has revised the plans to remove all rear-facing decks, and agreed not to create any communal areas behind the proposed buildings. There's an idea of an impact on visual characteristics of the neighborhood. This is going to block the view of a developed parking lot, not use of Buzzards Bay from a private way. Looking at this from the bridge across the street, you look at the parking lot and the backside of the buildings. Contrary to the points that have been raised, the lot is more than adequate in size. It's 21 acres. The bylaw allows for up to 339 units on those combined acres between the B3 and residential zone areas. Current permits allow for 266 units. Presently, there's 253 rooms. With the nine proposed units, it's 262 rooms, still less than the last permit that was allowed, and far below the total that the bylaw could permit. The site is suitable. It's already developed as a commercial accommodations. The addition of nine units isn't going to change that, nor will it have an appreciable impact on traffic. The largest driver of traffic in this area is Old Silver Beach. I don't need to tell you guys this, it's an incredibly popular location, the concrete backups along the beach. Nine new units here is not going to move that needle in any direction. There is adequacy of sewage. The wastewater system runs far below the threshold that's, that it's permitted for. Can absorb these additional units without any issue. Further, the property's on a DEP groundwater permit with a treatment facility on site. It will need approval from DEP. This is not a blanket approval. The applicant is seeking to continue to improve and reinvest in the property. They're trying to be a good neighbor that negotiated in good faith, and they continue working to hear and address the neighbor's concerns. There's been considerable effort to do so. For the reasons that have been set forth in all of the correspondence we've submitted and at the past hearings, I believe the board can grant this special permit, and I'm certainly happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Questions to the board. Start with you, Jerry.
No questions at this time. Frank? No, I thank you, Mr. Flower, for your explanation. I have a few things here. In 1968, you were granted a special permit.
Mm-hmm.
The surrounding areas were considerably different than they are now. It was much, much less populated, and you had many fewer rooms at that point in time.
Mm-hmm.
Yet, in the minutes, it clearly states the fourth point. Whereas there were no objections from the abutters, you know, the permit was granted. That's certainly not the case now, wouldn't you say, Mr. Flower?
I would agree.
And of course, two families, I mean, you're coming in here for a big ask, and, you know, we have the latitude to grant special permits, but this one's is a bit, is a bit Have you been to a comedy night there?
Some years ago.
Now, did you notice that when they have comedy nights, that they have to park in the two parking lots at Old Silver Beach, the small one with the volleyball?
I didn't see that the night I was there, but again, it's been seven or eight years.
Yeah, well, I've been a few times, and it's, it's overly used. You know, and as we mentioned before, to, to ask for as much as you're asking, a traffic study really would have been warranted. Did you, did you do a traffic study?
We didn't do a traffic study. The board hasn't requested a traffic study to this point, and again, I think that addition of nine units, going from 253 to 262 units, is not the level that, doesn't rise to the level of requiring a traffic study. Typically, we see that for brand-new developments or things that are going to drive, generate a lot of traffic in and of themselves. I don't believe that the addition of nine new units would do so.
Well, I mean, the, the use of the place has been greatly, has greatly increased over the past years, and I mean, again, this, this is a big ask. You would have expected that you might have complied with that. How many parking spaces do you have altogether?
I have that figured. It's in the 300 range. I don't, let's see if I can find it on the plan, Mark. It's on the site plan, bear with me, please. There are 373 parking spaces on site.
And the bylaw states that any change of use or new structural addition that requires parking in addition to that that already exists on the site shall meet the parking standards in accordance with 240141E. You don't disagree with that, do you?
No.
And what's the, well, first, and then also, you are asking for multifamily housing on a, in a residential?
No, we're, we're asking for commercial accommodations.
Yeah, well, it's still, it's a multifamily housing in a, in a, in a RB district. But what's the full name of this place?
Seacrest Beach Resort and Hotel.
And is it Ann Conference Center?
I, it sounds like you know the answer to the question, Mr. Fineran.
Yeah, I do. And in addition to your 265 or 261 guest rooms, you have Ballroom Number One with 318 occupants, Ballroom Number Two with 294 occupants, Ballroom Number Three with 257 occupants, Nossette Number One with 198 occupants, Nossette Number Two with 181 occupants, Nossette Number Three with 368 occupants, Nossette Number Four with 228 occupants, Nossette Number Five with 273 occupants, Chatham with 101 occupants, Highland with 86 occupants, and Race Point with 167 occupants. That becomes a total of 2,471 occupants in addition to the 261 or 265 units. At one space for a three-person capacity, that comes up to 823.6. Parking space is required, and that's required. Then on top of that, you have the Ocean Dining with 194 occupants, Shudders with 36, Reds and Four Seasons with 152, and the Restaurant and Bar with 382 occupants. I mean, if you add the, the first one that adds to 826, plus 191, plus 292, you're looking at 1,307.2 spaces required. Now, this board can grant you a 25% reduction at the maximum, and with that, you are required to have 980.4 spaces and 300 and what did you say?
There are 373 spaces currently.
So you, you basically have one-third of the parking you're required, and that is the exact reason why when they have comedy night and other things, that the parking lots at the small beach at Old Silver and even the large parking lot have a considerable amount of vehicles. When you consider that with everything else that you're asking for, I just don't see applying the bylaws as we're supposed to do, how we can possibly grant you this permit. And I think asking for four duplexes is just too much to start with.
So I'd be happy to address that, Mr. Fineran. The parking layout was approved in 1982 in accordance with the requirements in place at that time. There is correspondence in the file to that effect, there are, there's decisions to that effect. The planning board has reviewed this application and approved it, provided the parking spaces that are required for the new proposed buildings on site, and we have more than we believe are currently required. And I believe that there is more than ample parking here because it's, it has not changed from what was approved, and what we're proposing, the nine new units, has the parking addressed on site.
Again, 1982, that wasn't the time, but you're required to come here, and as the bylaw states, "Any change of use or new structural building addition that requires parking in addition to that that already exists shall meet the parking standards in accordance to 240141E."
And the new...
By far, you do not.
The newly proposed buildings meet that requirement?
I, yeah, the newly proposed buildings meet that requirement, but aren't they taken away from the 968 spaces that you're required? And aren't you supposed to meet all requirements?
I don't believe so, sir. I believe that we have to account for the new development in accordance with 14.8, which is what we've done. We've provided the parking that's required for these new buildings.
But you don't have the parking that's required for what's there.
Requirements change over time, Mr. Fineran. I think that this was approved, it's been approved, it's, we're not changing the existing underlying use of the main buildings. We're proposing four new buildings and the conversion of one, one spot that we're providing the required parking for.
Again, I'd just go back to the bylaw because what our job is, is to apply the bylaws. "Any change of use or new structural building addition that requires parking in addition to what already exists shall meet the standards." And you do not meet the standards by any stretch of the imagination.
I believe that...
And then I have to go back again to 1968, where they granted you that special, and there is a special permit missing out of the file on this thing, is somewhere along the line, I believe. But it's clearly here, that, it certainly seems indicate that you only got that permit then because there were no objections, and it seems to me that the objection to this is fairly universal. I personally, following my duty to enforce the bylaws, there's, there's absolutely no way I can approve this, and I have the experience of being there at a comedy night and having to park in the second parking lot of Old Silver Beach, which is a considerable distance. And, you know, people walking on that dark road afterwards, I mean, it's, you know, you don't meet the standards for parking at all, and to give you more buildings that really shouldn't be there, it's, it's too much of an ask. And I honestly, I think that, you know, this board does have latitude to, to give you something, but I, I think you're asking for much too much, and so do the large amount of people that are here this evening, as well as the 87 letters. I, you know, I think something more modest of a proposal may get a positive response from this board, but I don't, I don't see with, with all the bylaws that you're asking us to dismiss it's possible.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Fineran.
Suzanne?
To piggyback what Mark's saying, I've actually gone to comedy nights, too, and I think I parked on the tennis courts myself. I was over in that corner. I couldn't, it was dark, and I don't really know what I was parking on, but it was not nice tower anyway, like the tennis courts. Do you feel that they use for, the tennis courts are used for overflow parking right now?
I believe it has been used for overflow parking in the past.
And how do you intend to adjust that? They're going to go on town property?
That's not our intent at all. We can't stop somebody from parking on town property. We can, we can tell them that they have to park on site. You know, I don't really know how to address the question, Ms. Murphy. I think that we're providing the parking that's required for what's being proposed. I believe that this has been reviewed and approved by, by the planning board, and that parking wasn't raised as an issue at that point. I think that the, the site was reviewed and approved on a number of occasions, and we're providing the parking that's necessary for what we're proposing.
Okay.
Scott?
Yeah, with all the time, as you had mentioned, one would have hoped that... Yeah, with all the time, as you had mentioned, one would have hoped that between the applicant and the abutters, that you could have gotten together and kind of try and bridge some of these items. Can you just walk me through your thought process again on the twenty-one acre site in the split zoning, and why, again, you believe what you're proposing here tonight is viable?
Sure.
I'm still a little hung up on the residential component of the site and what you're proposing.
To your first point, though, Mr. Peterson, we did try. We, we, we did try to do that, and we had been negotiating with council for the abutters, for the association, and we're led to believe that we were reaching what we thought was a good result. And, you know, days before the March hearing, we were told that that was not the case. And we reached out again to new council, and were told that there was no interest in negotiating. So we did make an effort, and we have made a number of changes to plans in order to seek to address the concerns of the abutters. To your second question, or second point, I suppose, the B-three zoning district requires fifteen thousand square feet, plus an additional fifteen hundred square feet for each guest unit over five. Under that formula, we're B-three, the area's one hundred and fifty-two thousand forty square feet, five units for the first fifteen thousand square feet, plus an additional ninety-one units. That's a hundred and twenty-two thousand two hundred and fourteen divided by fifteen hundred, gets you to ninety-six units. However, for commercial accommodations operating as of January twentieth nineteen eighty-four, additional guest units may be added, provided that the lot is not less than one thousand square feet for each guest unit existing or proposed. Therefore, with a hundred and fifty-two thousand and forty square feet, a hundred and fifty-two guest units are permitted within the B-three zoning district. And this is in my January letter as well. In the RB district, for commercial accommodations lawfully operating as of August twenty-sixth nineteen eighty-three, for the first forty thousand square feet, there may be five guest units. For the remaining lot area, which is seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-three square feet, there may be one additional guest unit per four thousand square feet. Seven hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven divided by four thousand gets you a hundred and eighty-two guest units, plus the five for the first forty thousand one hundred and eighty-seven guest units are allowable. Therefore, there's a total of three hundred and thirty-nine units allowable on the combined site. That's a lot of numbers, and I talk fast, I realize that, but that is in the January correspondence.
I'm sure that it's going to come up here a little bit later, but again, the construction of the four new duplexes creates new non-conformities. Could you readdress that again, please?
The only non-conformity that's being proposed is a non-conforming setback to building one. Building one here would be located twenty-eight feet from the four-foot contour of tidal waters of Buzzards Bay. All the other buildings would comply with that fifty-foot setback. So that is, we're, we're taking the existing tennis court, which is eighteen feet off the water, we're improving it to twenty-eight. If need be, we could improve that to fifty. It pushes it more towards the parking lot and would require a redesign of the buildings a little bit, but it could be done if need be. That's the only non-conforming aspect of the proposed buildings.
So would you propose to change that?
I, I don't think we need to, but if the board, if it was, if it was going to matter to the board, we could.
No further questions right now. Thank you.
Tony?
I think all of my questions have been asked, but I do have to ask one last question. Why do you believe that these four new duplexes are not substantially, the definition of the bylaws, are not substantially more detrimental to the community and will not have an adverse effect to the area? Why do you believe this will not create that situation?
I don't think that adding nine units to an existing two hundred and fifty-two hotel is a significant detriment by any stretch of the imagination. The only view that we're blocking is a view of a developed parking lot. There are no wastewater concerns. We, I don't believe that there is a detriment to the neighborhood in allowing this.
Thank you.
Any follow-up questions? Jerry?
Yeah, you had mentioned you, you researched police complaints, as in we're not an enforcement A board. Has the zoning, has the building commissioner issued any violations to the hotel for...
Not, not that I'm aware of, but I, I didn't, I didn't look in that capacity because I have been, the, the idea of there being many noise complaints was raised over and over, so I looked into see how many noise complaints there had been recently, and the answer is not very many.
Thank you. Mark, do you have one?
Yeah. Substantial being the operative phrase here, don't you think that eight hundred and twenty-three point six parking spaces short is substantial?
I don't think we'd want to see eight hundred and twenty-three point six parking spaces here.
But, but you have the required, the number of seats that require that, and somehow, I don't know how, over the years, this hasn't been observed by anyone, but it's right here.
So, Mr. Fenner, I would just say that this was, you know, when this was expanded to two hundred and sixty-six potential units in nineteen eighty-two, and it ended up being two hundred and fifty-three units, there was discussion about required parking. The analysis was done then, and I submitted that correspondence from the planning board that was issued in nineteen eighty-two, addressing the parking needs. And we far exceed the requirements that were set forth at that time. What we're proposing, I think, I would agree, if we were proposing these conference rooms today, if we're proposing this hotel from, you know, from scratch, yeah, I think that would probably be correct. But we're not. We're proposing a total of nine new units, for which we're, we're providing the required parking under the cited section of the zoning bylaw.
Again, any change of use requires that you meet the current standard, so that's, that, that statement is incorrect. And just one more thing, I mean, in your negotiate, first, another, two things, actually. Wouldn't you say that between the eighty-seven letters and the amount of people in here, that would qualify as substantial objection to this?
I don't think substantial objection is, is defined in the zoning bylaws as a, as a determinative factor in your decision. There's objections to many things that this board approves. In regards to the eighty-seven letters, I can think of a few letters where one person submitted five or six letters. So it's not entirely correct to say there's eighty-seven letters.
No, but the opposition seems almost universal, if there were such a definition. And then, in these negotiations that you had that came to a stalemate, did you ever once consider reducing the size and scope of this so it may be more palatable for the neighborhood?
We can only...
Which has grown substantially since nineteen eighty-two.
We can only reduce the size so much because we do, we're required to be flood zone compliant. So...
I'm talking about the number, not the size. I mean...
I mean, it, it didn't come up in the conversations, quite honestly. And had it, we would have discussed it, but that was never requested of us when we were having those discussions with Attorney McCormick, and I never got to the point of having those discussions with Attorney Hary.
Well, I mean, a negotiation is a give and take, it's a two-sided thing.
I understand.
You could have offered and, and saw if they, but I...
I, I thought, quite honestly, Mr. Fenner, when, just prior to the March hearing, I thought we had reached an agreement that the association was going to support because that's what I was being told. And turns out that was incorrect, but we were moving forward in good faith and negotiating in good faith.
Why don't we move to public comment?
I have to, I have to apply the bylaws.
We'll come back if you've got additional questions. I'm sure the board may have some additional questions after public comment. Public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Very, it's very interesting to see you on this side of the table.
It's, it's a different, it's a different view from the side of the podium, for sure.
How much time do you need?
I was, I was going to bring up that. I know it's customary for two minutes, but if I'm allowed, we'll say ten, and I'll try to be under that. Good evening, board members. For the record, my name is T.J. Hary, I'm an attorney, and I represent Matthew Mahoney, Dave Mahoney, the Mahoney family, the Ruland and Buckland families. They're individual homeowners. And just before I start my remarks, I do not represent the association. That was a surprise for me when I became involved in this. As to what happened there, I'm not quite sure. I haven't had any involvement or any discussions with Attorney McCormick. As to Attorney Clower's negotiations formally with the association and the revisions that have been made to date, they're admirable, but there are some other serious issues with this application, and my clients do remain in opposition of this project. I figured I'd hit upon a few comments that I put in my letter, and then address a couple of other issues that I have found sense. One is that the original permit cannot be located. I'll admit that I've never seen an application like this before where, over the course of many years, separate special permits have been taken out rather than modifying the original. And I know that the original can't be located, it's not recorded at the Registry of Deeds. I think this board knows that when you can't put a special permit on record, that's an issue. Regarding multiple primary structures, that they're not authorized under the local zoning. Attorney Clower made reference to several properties in town where there appears that there are several primary structures on the site. Just because they exist elsewhere doesn't mean they're correct, and this board would have a duty to address that through this application. When you take a look at the structures themselves, they're nine units, and we're calling them commercial accommodations, really. When you take a look at them, they have the look and feel of primary structures. Number of bedrooms, the occupancy for each unit, they have full-size kitchens, living spaces, washer dryer, they're really standalone rentals. When you take a look, this could be rented out for the week, and there would be no reason for housekeeping whatsoever compared to other accommodations that are on the site. Regarding the abandonment issue in, in the tennis courts, there's no questioning that the tennis courts have, in, in fact, been abandoned. I've outlined that in my letter, it's, appears to be since at least two thousand and ten. And it's far beyond that two-year limit under Massachusetts general law and the Fama bylaws as well. Provided an article where an employee of the Seacrest admitted in two thousand and fifteen that those tennis courts have been abandoned for some time. Looking back at historical aerial footage, which I imposed in the letter, it looks like that the tennis courts were used, or at least in existence, in two thousand and nine. By two thousand and ten, they've been used for parking. And it's clear that the applicant bears the burden of proof and persuasion regarding abandonment. I'm reminded of the term, I'm reminded of the term that it's demolition by neglect, essentially, when it comes to these tennis courts. Attorney Clower did make reference that the structure themselves may be there if you consider asphalt a structure, but I would remind the board that use of tennis courts has long been abandoned as well. In my letter, I did outline if the board were so inclined to apply the powers chuckerin case law criteria application to determine whether the newly proposed commercial accommodations comprise any change or substantial extension of lawful pre-existing non-conforming use. I submit, when you take a look at that three-pronged disjunctive test, that an answer to yes of any of those would result in intensification. An intensification, whether it be under the powers chuckerin test or just the everyday term intensification, that's exactly what you have with this application. And a shift from tennis to a new commercial accommodations in that very spot, where historically it's been passive use of the property, whether it be tennis, the boardwalk there, the other area in the far corner, which appears to be concrete, it's a very passive use of that part of the property. So when you take into consideration these new structures that are being proposed and the use and the historical use involved there, it's a drastic intensification of that specific location on the property. Taking into consideration the special permit criteria under two forty twelve one E, it was a lot easier to say two forty two sixteen. The site is unsuitable as proposed. It's already heavily developed, as it is, with a number of commercial accommodations, mostly traditional hotel rooms. And again, these larger structures that are being proposed, they're basically apartment-style accommodations standalone, which undoubtedly leads itself to large gatherings with increased noise and light pollution. I am aware that, looking over the amended plans, Attorney Clower did propose lighting and things of that nature to accommodate the board and some of the concerns that were raised by your butters, but it's immediately on the water of Potter's Hole. Light, light carries over the water, and so does noise, no matter what you have there. And I did make reference to the historical use of noise and things like that with the existing suite that's in the far corner toward Quaker Road there. To the point that Attorney Clower made, that there's only been a handful of noise complaints, my clients and members of the public, they can't be blamed for the bystander effect, noise late at night and just assuming that someone else may have picked up the phone and made the call to the Fama Police Department. I'll preface my next statement by saying that the Fama Police Department does an outstanding job, but late at night, it's no secret that the Fama PD has been understaffed for a number of years, they only have so many patrols out. It's typically four with one squad car at headquarters that comes out as needed. So with only four vehicles patrolling the entire town, that late at night, we'll just say one or two o'clock, when certain other establishments have their complaints and perhaps some heavy crowds coming out of the bars, their attention is drawn elsewhere. So if someone were to pick up the phone, make a call to Fama PD and make that noise complaint, they're doing the best they can, but a noise complaint falls far low on their list when they're addressing other issues, especially during the summer season. And by the time the Fama Police do come to the property, the party could have quieted down or gone elsewhere, and that call that ended up as a noise complaint might very well be unfounded. I will call it the board's attention, and I believe it's part of the record, previously Seacrest membership or ownership staff, they've reached out to neighbors, abutters, and they've said, "Please give us a call if anything's going on." And I understand historically that had been the practice. So it's not just taking into consideration what the Fama PD has on record versus what they don't have. Regarding traffic flow and safety, member Fenner brought up a number of issues that I wasn't even privy to with those comedy nights and things of that nature with the increased parking. It's no doubt that they're a resort and conference center, and when you take into consideration the weddings and other events that all may be going on at one time, that's a significant amount of people. And to date, there has not been a traffic study proposed at all. Also, when you take into consideration the impact on the neighborhood views, characters, visual character, including views and vistas, I did submit correspondence from Shawna McNamara attesting of the fact that when you take into consideration this proposal, it could end up into a six-digit reduction in property value, which is pretty substantial, both on the visual impact and when taken noise considerations and the size of the buildings, things of that nature. It is a beautiful neighborhood with Potter's Hole, especially that view from the Santuit Road Bridge, which I included as part of our correspondence. It's tranquil, and it's beloved by the community. When you're posting these structures right up against the property line as you are, as being proposed, it will block out any sort of view from Buzzards Bay, whether that be Sunset or Buzzards Bay itself, both from the bridge and my client's properties, as well as others who live along Potter's Hole. Some other things that I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that I didn't necessarily put in the letter itself regarding lot coverage and setbacks, it's a bit of a misnomer when you see that it's a twenty-one acre site. A very large portion of this property is unbuildable due to regulatory reasons, CONCOM, setbacks from zoning, things of that nature. So when you look at the actual buildable portion of the lot itself, the existing buildings, the pavements, all that, the property really is maxed out as it currently is today. And the application is taking advantage of this. Also, I wanted to call it the board's attention, two forty eleven dot four two B, commercial accommodations over two and a half stories, the minimum setback shall be building height, and the minimum rear setback would be a hundred feet. Again, it's, it's a unique lot, the property line goes along Potter's Hole, my clients are actually immediate abutters because of this. So if the property line ended at Potter's Hole, it's very well possible that this application would not be permissible under zoning. There's also two forty nine dot four A, commercial accommodations. Those units may be contained amenities for private cooking and housekeeping only as the zoning board of appeals allows by... the zoning Board of Appeals allows by special permit and upon the board's determination that the allowed amenities are customary to guest units and will not change the nature of the use as commercial accommodations. Again, that's permissive language, and when you take into consideration exactly what's being proposed here, these standalone units that really can be considered primary units due to their size and accommodations, the fact that they don't operate as traditional hotel rooms, you can take that into consideration as well. That does it for my comments, and I would like to thank everyone for your time tonight.
Thank you all. My name is Jay Mahoney, and I want to begin and emphasize the importance of the time that everyone took to be here today to speak in opposition of this. And so first and foremost, for those of you who took time to babysit us like I did, or just getting the time to come here with our busy lives, thank you for that. My two sons will actually represent the fifth generation of the Mahoney family living across from Potter's Hole, and we are in direct opposition for this proposed expansion. The proposal of the Seacrest Hotel is not simply just a matter of urban development, but it poses a significant threat to the quality of our life and the character of our community that we lived in for generations. First and foremost, if we were to consider the impact of the hotel's expansion of our neighborhood's character and identity, TJ just laid out very well. Laying on that bridge for my entire life and my father's life and my children, I can't tell you how many times we spent watching, whether it be the sunset, fishing, and to say that we're looking at just an abandoned parking lot, that's just simply not the case. I mean, you're looking at seagrass, and to all of a sudden have to stare at the back of a building, it's going to be completely changed with the vista and the view that we've had, and so that'd be a significant impact. In addition to that, the construction project itself will cause significant noise with the coming and goings of workers, delivery, and with our narrow streets, and the additional noise that they'll put into the air, that will cause a significant and diminished quality of life for my family and for the residents of our community. Also, I wanted to address the issue of property value. I do believe that this impact of the expansion of the hotel will have a significant impact on property values in and around this community. As has been mentioned, this community has expanded, but it still has a very small-town feel to it and is a very tight-knit community. The addition of these hotel units, which are basically duplexes and multifamilies, will increase the noise and definitely could change our views and our vistas and significantly negatively impact the value of our property. Lastly, I want to emphasize the backing of this project comes from private equity whose goal is purely financial gain. The Seacrest Resort and Hotel has been bought and sold numerous times in my life, and although I'm sure the owners of the property now are acting in good faith, my family will be here for generations to come, and what's most important to us is to keep the property and to keep the community that I've been so fortunate to be raised in to not change for a negative impact. And so with that said, I would like to please ask the committee to vote in opposition to this bill, and I want to say thank you very much for your time.
Other public comment? Follow-up questions?
Can I ask somebody, just for everyone's edification, to point out the bridge that you just spoke of?
Yeah, sure. So we'll scroll to the first page, Jerry.
Okay. Can I go?
You can put your finger on it, just so.
Oh, okay.
All right, scroll.
Yeah, perfect.
It's kind of a better view down below with the...
Okay, thank you.
You know, to show where the buildings are going to be.
Right here is the bridge, this is our family property that we own together.
And those buildings are right?
They're right.
Right, and it would have been better to show it on the picture below.
Yeah, I think...
With the, with the dwell buildings there.
Yeah.
Up a little higher, no, the other way, the other way. The one with the four buildings on it. There. Now, just point the bridge, now, go back up here.
So from...
From here, our property is here.
Now, I want to, what about the bridge that everybody...
I can give you a...
Everybody knows where the bridge is.
I actually, in relation to that, I...
Because honestly, it's the best. This is the best way to really see it.
This is what the proposed area is, this is the bridge right here, and then these are all...
So they are directly in line.
It's exactly where we'd be sitting on, hanging.
And that would be a public view and vista?
Yes.
Could we have your name and address?
Oh, yeah.
No, we got you. We got you.
So I'm here with my family, that was my brother Jay, my name's David Mahoney. I own a property with my wife Samantha Mahoney on 729 West Falmouth Highway, as well as a trustee at 42 Centuit. So we certainly have a very vested interest in this proposed plan, and as a family, we oppose.
Any other public comment?
I think just from a, you know, looking at some of the... I'm sorry, my name is Jay Sheldon, I'm the new general manager of the Seacrest. I grew up 45 minutes from here, so on the South Shore, as close as I've been home in a long, long time, so this is very personal to me, this job and this project, obviously. You know, just some clarifications on a couple of things. One is, the proposed cottages, the developments here, which we keep calling duplexes, they in no way, shape, or form have full kitchens. They're not going to have full-service kitchens and cooking, they're going to be very similar to the one that we have in existence now. So any opposition or suggestion that they're multifamily homes or along the lines of, you know, being able to, they're going to take away from anybody going out to eat or get housekeeping service, they're actually hotel inventory, just like the units of the unit that we currently have in place now. So I don't know where the concern there is, but they do not have full kitchens, they're cottage rental, multi-bedrooms, but not full kitchens for use. The other thing I will point out, and I've, you know, I understand the math and your point there, if we rented every guest room separately and then occupied every meeting space with a non-hotel guest, and then had every seat in every restaurant filled with a non-hotel guest or a non-convention guest, that would make sense in that parking number. But that's not the way the hotel is designed, that's not the way the hotel business works. We sell rooms, we have a group sales team that sells meeting space in conjunction with the hotel rooms. In the summer, during the busy times, we all know that the hotel restaurants are filled with hotel guests, so by multiplying seats and multiplying, you know, conference room occupancy, we're detracting from the fact that most of those guests are already in the hotel and already parked on site. So I just, I wanted to clarify that with everybody. We're not, we're doing some math here and some math and creating a grand scheme of things of what could happen, possibly happen, but that's not the way the hotel business works, that's not the way the Seacrest works, and, I mean, we're never going to sell, we wouldn't be able to sell that big of a meeting with zero hotel rooms attached to it. I'd love to, but we couldn't. No group planner is going to book that. You have to have the rooms associated with the meeting space, they want to stay on site. So I think when we look at, how many people can we hold in a meeting, and how many guest rooms do we have, and how much parking, those aren't two separate items, they're together.
Thank you.
Can I comment?
Sure.
The goal of owning this hotel is to completely max out all of the spaces, restaurants, hotel rooms, conference rooms, high school uses things. The beach, yes, the beach club that the community uses, I guess. I mean, if you're trying to say you're not going to... A hotel will fill rooms until they are overflowed. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name is Anna Maharrison, I'm a Butter of the hotel, I've been there since '84. One thing that wasn't mentioned as far as parking and surplus of people is the Seacrest sells memberships to a beach club. So they park there every day, they get a beach chair, they eat at the facility, and it's more parking spaces. And the property that I see from my house is not very well-maintained, so for them to want to put in several more buildings, who's going to paint those? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bruce Bagdisarian. Our family has owned our house at 7 Santuit, which is right across Potter's Hole, for the last 40 years. And I just wanted to point something out, these units, so I think eight of them are at least two or three bedrooms with a lot of common area, like dens, so you really shouldn't look at them like a unit. These are going to have, these potentially are going to have a lot of people in them, and I think you have washing machines. So you've got, I think, at least two and a half baths. So you've got, this is like multiple units, each one of them, and so you're going to have a lot of fluid flowing into that treatment plant, which I'm sure is probably, it's probably grandfathered, it's probably not at current standards, and, you know, people already have an issue in the summer with that pond, and the health of the pond is important to us. So all of us, you know, we stop on that bridge, people enjoy it, my son used to fish for crabs down there, people go in the water. So this is just going to, this is another adverse effect on the community and the pond is what's going to be flowing into that area due to these additional units.
Board discussion?
I've got a question. TJ, excuse me. Just for the edification of people on TV and everything, do you have a conflict of interest since you were chair and vice-chair on this committee?
I don't believe I do, I can't quote the chapter and verse, but I think enough time has passed, if you're thinking about the ethics rules, I think enough time has passed where it's okay for me to be representing someone.
I respect, and I just wanted to get it out there for people that may not be aware of or may have some concerns.
Sure, I've been living in my current house for, sandwich for about a year and a half now, so I've been off the board a little longer than that.
Second question is, you brought up buildable versus actual lot coverage. I think our regs, basically, refer to lot coverage, even though buildable is a practical consideration. We abound by lot coverage, correct?
Of course you are, and I was speaking to the practical aspect, it's a very unusual property where it appears that 21 acres actually includes Potter's Hole and actually runs across the marsh on Santuit and Co-Tuit, making my clients immediate of Butters. So that's the unique aspect of this project.
Thank you. No further questions.
Frank, you have a question?
Yes, I have another question for Mr. Hurry. You mentioned in your presentation and you expressed an opinion in your letter that the tennis courts were abandoned. What is the significance of abandonment? Are you trying to tell us that you can't put anything there once you abandon the tennis courts?
So, under Massachusetts, whether you apply the legal definition or the common sense everyday version of abandonment, so there's a two-year period that runs if something is abandoned under Massachusetts general law and the local bylaws as well. And what's unique about Falmouth is they do offer an amnesty for those two, after those two years have run. However, there's also a provision in the Falmouth bylaws that state that commercial accommodations, it's not applicable toward commercial accommodations, which is exactly what we have here.
Okay, I will accept your argument that the tennis courts were abandoned, but the second question is, what does that mean?
So there is case law, and there's, it's the ZBA Wareham case, I won't bother pronouncing the last name on that, but when you have a pre-existing legal nonconformity, and if that has been abandoned, meaning that it's been either not used for a period of time, two years, or there's a section, second option, if that the, that it's essentially been abandoned where there's an intent to be abandoned, so it's one of two there. Either those two years run strictly, or there's an actual intent there where those tennis courts have been abandoned. I think here, the evidence has shown that there was a clear affirmative showing of abandonment where back in 2009, those overhead shots essentially showed a tennis court, you can presume that it was in use, and by 2010, there's parking on the site, and there's been parking there ever since.
Well, let me say again, if I agree with you that I agree it's been abandoned, is it your position that this board could not approve anything for the location of the tennis courts?
If we're dealing with commercial accommodations, it appears so.
All right, thank you.
For, as to Jerry's question, it's one year.
One year.
One year.
All right, so I'm far beyond that, I'm good.
You're well within, you're far beyond that.
Thank you, Mr. Fenneran.
And I'd just like to point out that the management from the Seacrest tried to call these things cottages. I mean, the maximum building height in this town is 35 feet, these things are 34 feet. I mean, anybody here who knows what a cottage is, okay, God, it's generally considered a small, one-story structure. These are full-size duplex, and large at that.
Absolutely.
And then the kitchen issue, again, that's, it just adds to the long list of asks that you have, which, whatever, I've stated enough.
And that's why I've been sticking to the zoning term "commercial accommodations," because I believe it was originally applied as multifamily, which was not the correct bylaw.
And there is a restriction on kitchens.
Of course.
I think anything that heats something up is a kitchen with a stove, but they have
Just real quick on the kitchens, Matt Mahoney didn't want to get all three of us up here, but here we are. They advertise them as well-stocked kitchenettes, complete with appliances, so that's how they're advertised.
Do you not include ovens, cooktops?
It's okay to be recognized by the chair. Thank you. So we have some board discussion?
You can speak.
I can just respond to...
Oh, that's fine, you're very glad.
Just for the record, Mr. Fenneran, I agree with you, it's one year, and I have no objection whatsoever, Mr. Hurry being here representing his clients, I didn't, that does not strike me as a conflict of interest, and I personally am more than okay with it, not that it requires my approval, I just want to put that out there, though. To the third Mr. Mahoney's point, I think that refers to the existing cottage, because these aren't built yet. That said, unfortunately, Jay, respectfully, there was a stove that's proposed in the duplexes. However, the application includes an application under that provision of the bylaw that allows for cooking facilities to be located in the commercial accommodations. That was part of what we submitted as our revised application. I think that, you know, we've made our points, I think that, you know, if there is concern about the nonconforming setback, that is certainly something we can look at, changing the setback to that, I don't think it's required, because I think to what Mr. Duffy was trying to say, the structure itself remains, we're improving that setback, it's going to be 28 feet as opposed to the 18 that it is now, but if the board was concerned about that, we could look to revise those plans. Other than that, you know, we've, I think, put our cards out there for you, and I just want to note that we would be open to continuing to speak with the Butters to try to find changes that might be amenable. So, that said, I'd be happy to hear the board discussion and then proceed accordingly.
All right, board discussion. Let me start with the quiet end of the table this evening.
Yes, it's a complex one, but most of the questions have been asked that I was going to ask, I agree with everything that's been asked, particularly this parking issue. I think Mr. Hurry makes a very compelling case to deny this. And other than that, I think it's a problem, I think it's a tremendous problem to build these units. I think that it's substantially detrimental to the community, it's going to have adverse effects. it's substantially detrimental to the community. It's going to have adverse effects. Why add to parking? What if all parking spaces were used? What if all the hotel rooms were used? What if all the convention space was used? You wouldn't have enough parking. And although the applicant's attorney suggests that just a few more units isn't going to do that much more harm, there already is a tremendous amount of harm there. Why are we going to add to that? Why would we allow that to happen? So I agree with Mr. Fenner. But I do think that the abutters attorney has made a very compelling case to deny this.
It's difficult. I mean, again, I truly wish that with the folks here in the room and the applicant, that there was a bridge there. But I don't know. It seems as though with 87 letters here, I just don't see potentially that that's going to come to fruition. I'd love to have the discussion to be continued, but I'm not sure that you're going to get there from what I'm hearing from the abutters. I struggle with the way that the lot is designed and how things are conforming or non-conforming. So I don't know. I still have questions and I'm not completely behind the applicant's proposal.
Suzanne?
I'm the same way. I think it's a big detriment to the pond. In my mind, when I went out there and walked around where the units would go, there was trash everywhere, both sides of the fence. I took pictures of it with my phone. I was pretty surprised, because if someone was coming to my house, I'd clean it up. And you all knew we were going to go out there and walk around. And there was trash. And those sheds or whatever those storage units are, there was trash everywhere around them. And I think it's detrimental. It's not going to get any better, obviously, because you would have cleaned it up. And so it's detrimental to the pond, in my mind, and the neighborhood.
You know, I've listed numerous things in the neighborhood of seven or eight, and I probably missed two or three. You know, one or two, I mean, we have the latitude. But honestly, I think the neighbors speak for themselves. And this is just a case of what you see is what you get. And asking for any more is completely unreasonable. And to try to talk around this bylaw, that requires you to meet 240-141E. And you have roughly a third of it. Actually, you have less than a third before we give you the 25% allowance. Because the original numbers were 1,382 or something. I'm sorry. I'm getting old. But it's just not there. And others have testified, and I know you all know, that when they have the comedy night there, they fill the little parking lot where everybody plays volleyball at Old Silver Beach. And sometimes the further parking lot, which is considerable distance away, it's, what, 400 yards? It can be half-filled, because I've parked there before. And, you know, no traffic study. I mean, it's just, I mean, I think the place is at capacity. And then just one more thing. All this conservation land in the pond, I mean, I just did kind of a thumb, you know, back-of-the-napkin thing. And to say that there's actual 14, actually 14 usable acres there is an exaggeration. And, I mean, it's technically not how the bylaw reads, but, I mean, that's what we're asking. And, you know, this is 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag, and I could never vote for it.
Frank?
Well, I'm looking at this as a specially permitted use, not as a non-conforming use. There's been a lot of analysis, and the non-conforming use aspect, I don't think is correct. But nevertheless, I think the Seacrest is a resort at its acceptable limits in this location, in this site, and in both zoning districts. I'm also concerned about the proximity of this to the residential neighbors. And there's quite a few of them. There's a very well-established residential neighborhood, both on the west side of Quaker Road and even some on the east. And its proximity to the beach and so forth. It's a very busy neighborhood. I also find that Potter's Hole, the pond, is not a buffer and does not act as a buffer. I myself have lived on a body of water, and I can tell you right now that sound and noise travel over it. So the possibility of hearing everything that's going on is certainly there. You also had a tennis court, which is a daytime activity. You're putting commercial accommodations now, which is a round-the-clock activity. So it's a change of use that's, I think, significant. And even though there's only an application before us for nine units, I think under the circumstances, it's a significant impact on the neighborhood. So I feel it'd be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood to approve this project.
Jerry?
I couldn't add anything.
I have nothing else to add either. Blink a moment with your client, Tony Flower.
I had a chance to speak with my client. It's very clear where the board is. Appreciating the effort that the board has put into this over the past six-ish months, we're not going to request a continuation. I would like to request withdrawal without prejudice.
We have requests to withdraw without prejudice. Anyone want to make a motion? So moved. Fenner, is there a second?
Second.
We need to discuss this at all. Anyone opposed? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Application to withdraw without prejudice.
We thank you very much for your time and your patience. And we appreciate, I truly mean it when I say this, I appreciate the abutters coming out and making their voices heard. So, thank you.
Yep. Yes, he's here.
Are you going to do the lady with the house or wait for her?
Your first case is here.
Yeah.
Mrs. McClark was all over it.
I was on that. I was actually on that, believe it or not. No, I just happened to see her standing there. That's why I brought it up.
We'll take a brief, five-minute recess to the sound of the next gavel.
All right, we're back. Continuing on with our list of continuations. We have 02324, Cero 426 T-Ticket Highway East Falmouth, requesting a special permit for home occupation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am returning back today. Had, did remove all the tree in the front of the house, and also on the side. I also had invite my neighbor next door to come take a look. And I helped her to cut on the side as well, so when she access from her driveway, she can see as well. And the length from before you go on the street, I believe you measured it, is forty feet. Did I say that right? And we have two parking car in the front for the customer. And basically, I'm coming here to tell that my spa in Eckertown is a big spa. The reason why I opened here, because I have returned client who have problem. And I have limit client. It's not that I have a big spa like those people near the area in Falmouth. The maximum I can do is like five client. Just like people go to see cardio practice. You cannot do more, otherwise your body get hurt. So in between client, I'm gonna gap one hour between, so that way access won't go out. So we can relax, cleaning, and that way we have empty parking, the next client coming. So basically, I'm gonna be having one hour gap, just to make save for the area. And maximum I would take, our body can do five clients per day. Just like the dentist, you go to the dentist, or going to see cardio practice. It's not the spa open, so many people can come in. And the hour you had mentioned to close by 7:00 PM. The reason why I have 7:00, 7:30, because some client, they do go to work. And they wanna come after work. And I wanna have ability for one client to come over. And we have two people working, probably one and a half, two or three. I just put three in there, just to be a safe sign. But we can have more than that. And basically during summertime, starting from June 1st through the end of, I don't know, September, October, it depends the seasonal, I will be there full time, most of the time. And then when I come back, maybe in the morning, I'll take one client who live nearby. They don't wanna take a boat over, and one person work there. And what else? And my licensed practice, it's not like people who have handicap. Because we don't have facility lift people up, because we do Thai yoga, bodywork massage. So if someone had in handicap, in a wheelchair, I would recommend them go to see someone. They have facility, they can lift them up, put on the table. Just like people going to dentist, they wanna have root canal. They don't have facility to do that. They get referrals, I would refer, say you have to go somewhere like cardio, physical therapy who have facility to do that, or the hospital. We do limit. What else? And that's it. Do you have any question, anybody?
Questions from the board. Jerry?
No questions from me.
Frank?
I kinda wish we had gotten information about the removal of the trees beforehand. I would have liked to have gone out and taken a look, but, so I kind of refer to anybody else on the board if they did take a look, and if we do have sufficient sightlines down there. But I would like to know, how many, you mentioned that you have a clinic in?
Martha's Vineyard.
Martha's Vineyard?
Yes, in Eckertown.
How much time do you spend on Martha's Vineyard?
I start full, I do full time, start from June 1st through the end of September. But it depends seasonal, I might be extended. And usually if I'm open here, I probably do one client a morning, if they need it. And most client come in, they doing Thai yoga massage, because low back problem, cycle problem. And then I would take the boat going to work there. And I wouldn't come back home until, take the last boat, 5:00, get here at 5:30. Then if a client need it, I'll take another client, and then someone will be there who have do massage license, and work from there. So it's not a big spa that I'm doing. I'm, I opened this practice, just like a physical therapy, cardio practice in front of my house. He work by himself.
Well, um.
You know, I, it's not like I have a traffic coming in, it's a big spa, nail spine, all that. No.
So when you're on Martha's Vineyard?
Yes.
Who is running the place in Falmouth?
In Falmouth?
Yeah.
It would be either my daughter or my cousin, who have a license work there. Either one or two people will be there.
So these are members of your family?
Yes. Maybe I will hire one employee. It depends like if be busy. But at least one or two people will be there.
But there'll always be somebody, a member of your family there?
Yes. And also, we go by appointment. If no appointment, nobody can come.
Okay.
So I cannot have someone just come in without?
No, I think you mentioned that the last time you were here.
Okay.
That you go by appointment, and I appreciate that. I think it's probably the only way you can operate something like this. But I'm concerned that just being a home occupation, that to be some family member present on the property all the time is open. And that will be the case?
Yes.
All right.
Mark?
Did you say you're gonna remove all the trees?
No, not all the tree. So when the car come out, the tree on this side, we took about two or three of them, I believe. And when you come, you could see the light from there. We also cut on the other side.
Took, you took three complete trees out of that, on the left side?
Two or three, or two or three, I forgot. It's some small, some big, but I can see that from it. And then on my neighbor next door, when she come out, we also take one tree out for her.
So she can see. Yeah, that wasn't the problem.
Also navigate, get out, left and right.
And that actually learned from another case, that is the most dangerous stretch of road on Cape Cod, from Jones Road to Fresh Pond Road. So I appreciate that you went a little beyond. And that really was my only concern, safety. So I'm fine.
Thank you.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I appreciate the tree removal. It looks, I also appreciate the fact that you doing that gap so that someone can leave, and there's not someone pulling in at the exact same time.
Oh, yes.
I think that's a great idea.
Because we only can do take five client, so we gotta just say, you have to come at this time.
Yeah.
But I have to leave one in the evening, because people get, like, all of you get out, what, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock?
Yep.
Traffic get there, and they're gonna say you need, kinda like, why you cannot open for us?
No, thank you. I'm all set.
You're welcome.
Scott?
Yeah, the three items we had from the last meeting was the line of sight, the parking, and the hours. And it seems like you addressed all three of them, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Tony?
Hi, I'm Kathy Thomas. I'm the abutting neighbor. She just spoke about the hours again, and I believe that the home occupation, the hours need to end at 7:00. And she's saying she's gonna go maybe to 7:30. I don't.
No, I didn't say that. I said before, I request 7:30.
Excuse me, this is, this is, excuse me.
Hold on.
This is not a back and forth.
Okay.
Gonna make a comment.
So I was just concerned about the hours, and I wanna make sure they end at 7:00. She did remove some hedges. The site is better getting out of our driveway, but it's still not as good as it could be. I mean, it's, those hedges are very big. And I know you had spoke last time about you cut them deck, and they're just gonna grow again. And they are. They're just gonna, you know, they're, if, if they become back, if they grow back, then they will be blocking the view again.
These actually have stumps. These are down to the ground, stumps.
One, yes, yes.
Two, I think they do on this picture.
On, yes.
Yeah.
But they do grow back. We used to have hedges, we had, we pulled the whole thing out. We had to literally pull them from the, out of the ground, at our house.
I mean, we're talking a two-inch stump.
Oh, yeah. No, he used to cut them down to the ground, and they would grow back. So we had, we ended up pulling them out of our house.
You can drill them and fill them with Epsom salt.
You can.
You know, we had, we had somebody come in.
And they won't grow back. They will rot. They'll dry out.
They make out of condition.
Yeah, we can.
I mean, it works very well. Just drill them down.
Other public comment?
Hello. My name is Ally Pothere. I'm a terrible public speaker, so excuse me, but here I am. I have visited relaxation spa at the Vineyard location multiple times. I'm a family friend of Emily and her daughter. And I know that Emily's passion to help people is second to none, and how important this location in Falmouth would be to her. And I personally was excited to learn about her vision, opening a spa in town. It's one with a personal touch and a comforting atmosphere, which in my opinion is pretty rare to find in town. I'm born and raised in Falmouth, and I'm familiar with the area in which she would like her spa to be located. And while I don't hold any professional weight, I don't see it causing any disruption to the day-to-day life for neighboring homes, businesses, or commuters, based on how she plans to have her business set up and run. Beyond that, she's taken steps to remedy the concerns that have been brought up in the past, one being the hedges. Again, being a family friend, I've pulled out of the driveway multiple times, and recently, it's much better. You can see very clearly on both sides, comfortably pulling out and in the driveway. Emily and her family moved to Falmouth about a year ago, and I think that it's admirable that she's wanting to open a business that would provide wonderful healing services to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. You did great, too, by the way. Speaking, speaking.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Board discussion. Unless there's any follow-up, any follow-up questions? Board discussion.
My concern was the sightline.
Be maintained.
Yeah, well.
Yes.
Actually, like I said, if you're concerned with the stumps growing, the simplest way is to drill holes in them and pour some Epsom salt, put a piece of plastic over the top, and they'll dry out, and nothing will grow.
Make it a condition.
We'll do it.
It's pretty simple.
I'm all set. Otherwise.
I mean, like a half-inch hole.
And it's 8:30 in the AM to 7:00 PM? That is the hours?
Correct.
Okay.
Suzanne? I'm all set. Scott?
I'm all set.
Tony?
I'm all set.
How would the board like to proceed?
Want to close here?
Yeah. Is that a motion?
Motion to close.
Frank? Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed. No more testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
To approve with conditions.
Motion approved with conditions, second Suzanne. Findings?
Findings, let's see. It's a 426 T-Ticket Highway. It's in a residential C-zone. Ovalay District is Great Pond, no flood. The lot size is .78. It's on a state road. We had three people in opposition. It's a home occupation. That's about all I have of findings.
It was handicapped accessible, right?
No, she just said it was not.
I thought that.
They don't take handicapped customers.
There's a handicap ramp.
There is one?
They don't have the ability to lift them onto the.
Okay, that's all I have.
Testimony was that there will be less wastewater generated with this use, no products will be sold. It's going to be a relaxation spa, massage. Testimony from a butters and concern about the sightlines coming out of the driveway. The board takes knowledge that this is a dangerous direction of roadway.
And?
Other opposition concerns the insufficiency of parking and concern accidents, as well as hours of operation, which will be conditioned, days of operation, hours of operation, and the sign. Any additional findings?
We might include this letter that we just received.
Yeah, that will, yeah, it was submitted today, but yeah, it'll be included in the record.
Did you mention conditioning the?
We haven't got the conditions.
Oh, sorry.
Any other findings?
Hours of op. 8:30 to 7:00.
That the line of sight will continue in perpetuity.
Perpetuity. Must kill the stumps.
Do you wanna identify how wide that is?
The plant here, forty feet?
It says forty feet.
Right. I mean, we should.
No, I agree, absolutely.
Shall remain at forty feet.
Maintain it in perpetuity, no plantings.
The owner has also advised us that she has a facility on the Vineyard, so therefore, there must be a family member in attendance at Falmouth all the time.
With a license.
With a license, okay.
Must comply with all sections of 249.6 concerning home occupation. Must be, you know, family occupied, so that they, somebody that can't be transferred, can't have more than two vehicles of, as we call it, customers at a time pursuant to bylaw. I'll defer to the building department if they need to require a handicapped spot or not.
Anything else, Norrie?
Any other conditions?
So did you, but elimination of existing stumps and no future planting, would that be a good way to word it?
I think, I think I said has to maintain the view in perpetuity. That's a fancy lawyer way of saying what you want.
Yeah.
Same thing.
At least for 99 years.
Any other conditions, Norrie, or anyone else?
No.
All right, anything else? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Down to the news section.
Hey.
All right, continuing on, new hearings. 02424, Zazour, 107 Stryper Lane, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct an addition exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures.
All right, we have Samuel Zazour, I hope I said it correctly. 1570 Tremont Street, Boston, Mass., applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. Doing Stryper, right, yeah?
Yes.
Permit pursuant to Section 240 113A4, the code of Falmouth, to construct an addition exceeding 20% lot cover, coverage by structures. The subject property is 107 Stryper Lane. And from town departments, planning has no comment. Fire department has no comment. Building department has no comment. And then we have engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Stryper Lane is a private right of way in this area. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public properties or butters or public rights away. Four, we recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures, or stormwater harvesting measures, such as rain barrels for the new roof area at a minimum. Five, we recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Quotations, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence, while affixing legible numbers required, time limit for compliance, unquote. Six, where this site slopes down to the street, we recommend that erosion and sediment controls are included for this project to protect abutting properties. We defer to the board if the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Quotations, construction of this project shall follow the town's soil, erosion, and sediment control standing conditions. Document can be found on the engineering division page of the town's website. References to the town, to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the zoning board of appeals and will be the permitting authority for this project. That was engineering. Conservation has no comment. Health has no comment, there's going to be a new septic. And I have water. The existing water service to 107 Stryper is a three-quarter inch copper. It is recommended that it is updated to a one-inch PE. Also, new additional footing is within the buffer zone of the water service and may need to be relocated outside of the new addition. Please have the applicant reach out to the water department with any additional questions. And I think we have no letters. And I think that's what we have.
Good evening, sir.
Well, good evening. I don't, do not have a fancy presentation. I have no slides. But I have something to make it easier for all of you. I have photographs of my house, and I have photographs of the house directly across from me. I'll hand them out in a second. And I've actually used my neighbor's plans. His house is the mirror image of my house, so I reverse the image to make it look the way my house will be when it's complete. And I would like you to have them, because looking at drawings is one thing, but looking at what it will actually turn out to be is another. So if I may.
To the secretary.
Thanks. You wanna hang them? I'll take them.
Yeah, I will. Pass them around.
That's my house, if you can't tell. And this is the, and this is my goal.
That's the neighbor. Okay, perfect. Thanks.
And as was said, I'm not changing the number of bedrooms. I'm just enlarging the master bedroom, bathroom, and the kitchen, beautifying the neighborhood. The house needs a lot of work. Just to restore it back to its original condition would not be worth it. The new lock coverage is about 22.8%. I think that's within the, well within the limits. Now, regarding a couple of the comments that I heard regarding the different departments, I did speak with the man, Mr. Lynn, from the water department. He's wrong about the location, but he's right about replacing the water line, which is already planned to be replaced. It's just not exactly where he thinks it is, and I did speak with him. It's probably about five feet beyond where he, where he imagines it, but all new. Because the new system, new septic system's coming in, a lot of things are being rerouted. And because the water line is so close to the leaching field, it has to be sleeved. So I'm going to do it properly, whether it's one inch, three quarter, whatever the standard is, that's how I'm doing it. Numbers on the door, of course. I will take care of that. I did have numbers. I don't know. I think they fell off. With respect to erosion control and rainwater, I think there are two issues. I think one was erosion control. Well, the whole lot is going to be regraded. That's why it looks the way it does. It looks like it's rather abrupt when it hits the pavement on the, on the street. And that's because the person who owned it before me kept on adding topsoil, to the point where the topsoil was actually higher than the shingles. So it's not good. So when the little parking area in the front was removed, because it was all rotted out, a lot of that soil actually just, just from walking over, it's sort of filled in. But that will all be regraded, and it, I don't know if there's gonna be a need to do anything special in the front, as far as where my lawn hits the pavement. It'll be very similar to the, my neighbor's lot. The only thing that's going to be different about my house, and it's the same exact, he started with the same exact house, and I have his drawings, so the roof line will be exactly the same. The windows will be in about the same location, but they'll be different design. And I'm gonna have clapboards in the front. Other than that, the gable ends are exactly the same. I have his exact drawings, we're, we're within a half an inch, so you're seeing the finished product. With respect to the drywells, and I did discuss this with the civil engineer, there's never been any flooding, pooling, scarring of the land on the, on the property, none, none at all. It's all sand. When it rains, the water disappears. In addition, when I do the regrading, because it is awful, the asphalt driveway will be removed as part of the regrading process, because it's all cracked, and it's really not in the right spot. And my plan on that is to have, you know, a gravel trimmed with the cobblestones, like you see, you know, everywhere on the Cape. So I really don't see, you know, a good reason to spend more money digging holes for drywells. The new roof is really not that, not that much of a rain catcher. Most of the roof is on the back of the house. There's never been a problem, as I said. There's no pooling, there's no flooding, there's no scarring, there's no runoff into my neighbor's yard. In fact, I've discussed with my neighbors that I am gonna regrade it, and hopefully, they end up at the same grade as me, because they're doing their house. They're at, I'm at 107. I think they're 101. I don't know how the numbers go. They're 101, 103. But we're gonna be at the same grade. There's not gonna be any problem with my, you know, if there was runoff, which there isn't, it's not gonna run my way, and it's not gonna run their way. Again, same number of bedrooms, so no issue on the septic system. It's all gonna be redesigned and moved, you know, away from the new footings and the new foundation. And I really am going to beautify the neighborhood. It is, there are two or three rundown houses in the neighborhood, and unfortunately, one of them is mine, and it won't be rundown for long. So I'm happy to answer any of your questions. I'm looking forward to getting this done, looking forward to moving down here. I've been spending about 45 weekends a year, and three or four, four weeks a year, and I'm really looking forward to moving down permanently. But I can't do so until the house is completely renovated and like new again, so.
Questions for the board. Start with you, Tony.
I didn't hear what you said about drywells.
Well, I, I think it's an unnecessary expense, because I've been there for 12 years. There's been zero flooding, zero pooling of water, zero water running into my neighbor's yard, and nothing in the basement. And the water just disappears as soon as it rains. It's, it's, it's a sand, it's sand with about three inches of topsoil.
Did engineering require it? But did engineering require it?
Yeah, or a rain guard, which is quite simple.
Well, well, that's my other alternative is on, is around the house, around the perimeter, to do some sort of gravel, because I don't want any plants up against the house, because plants destroy houses. I used to paint houses. So I don't want any plants touching my house. So I do plan on having, you know, a drip, I don't know what you'd call, a gravel pit along the house, nice and neat, so nothing grows there. Keep all my plantings off the house, flowers, bushes, et cetera. So I, I think that's a better way of doing it than drywells. I, drywells, I mean, it's, it's not gonna do anything.
I'll read it again. Number four, can I read it again?
Yes.
"We recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells, comma, rain garden, comma, or other stormwater infiltration measures, or stormwater harvesting measures, such as rain barrels for the new roof area at a minimum." I just thought I'd read it.
Well, I think the rain garden is the way to go.
It's gonna end up being, it's gonna be part of.
it's going to be part of...
I'm sorry?
That'll be part of the requirement.
Yeah, sure.
All right.
Yeah. But I think it's just a better way to finish off the house, to have the perimeter of the house nice and neat, not have, you know, plantings up against.
Only other comment is I think it fits in well within the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah.
Scott?
No, the house is ready for a little TLC, you know, with the new septic and everything, it's a good change, so good luck in your project.
Suzanne?
Are you doing parking out front like your neighbor is?
I eventually will. After, I want to, but I also want to widen my driveway, just to here, just to here, to get to... you can't really see it on the picture, but if you come up my driveway, there's a spot just to the right where another small car would fit, and...
Regular.
Right, but it wouldn't be... I don't want it to be wide at the street, it's going to be one car wide at the street, and then a little spot for my little car, I have a little car that will fit, you know, sort of diagonal off the main driveway.
That's all I have, it looks like a great project.
Thank you.
I too used to paint houses for too long, and the crushed stone works the best, because it doesn't allow the water to bounce back up, as you know, but that makes perfect with a rain garden.
Yeah.
I mean, and there's no alternative of nothing.
Yeah.
And secondly, as far as the erosion control, that's to keep it from running in the street, you know when it's going to rain, and it's actually required before you put a shovel in the ground. And it's cheap, it's just a straw and the rolls.
I understand, I understand, but all I'm saying is after, within five days, the lot's going to be leveled. You know, it's not going to look like that, so if I need to do erosion control for five days, I will.
It's till the end.
But by the... but there will be nothing to control, because it'll be flat, so I'll leave it there.
Other than that, I mean, obviously, you're due for a touch-up, and it's a modest project, and I have no problems with it. Congratulations, and enjoy your time down here.
Frank?
Mm-hmm.
Eric?
Just to clarify, you're not asking for a wider driveway, you intend to come back at that point in time?
Well, I don't want it wider at the street, for sure, if that's your question. If it's wider at the top end, do I have to come back?
I think you have to, we'd have to rule that out.
All right, then I'll come back.
It depends.
I'm not going to let it hold up the job, because I really... I want to move in by...
I just asked him a question.
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
And the other thing is, thanks for the pictures, these are some extras if you want to bring them home.
I had... it's all in my head. I can put that house together without looking at plans, trust me.
He looks at it every day.
I look at it every day.
Public comment? Seeing none. Board discussion? How would the board like to proceed? Motion to close? Motion to close?
So you're going to remove the asphalt driveway, and you're putting in crushed stone?
Correct.
So there's no more asphalt, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that won't create a problem for the width of his driveway, because it's pervious, so it won't be a problem. I'm not sure, I don't have a copy of your plan in front of me, you did mention cobblestones. I'm not sure if those are on the plan or not.
Well, I'm not even sure it's drawn in yet, because we haven't done the grading. The grading is so bizarre. This man worked, I believe, the person who owned it before me worked for... at a golf course, and he kept on planting and adding dirt, and planting and adding dirt, and planting and adding dirt. So we really don't know what it's going to look like, other than it will be at least a foot lower than it is right now, so...
Bring home all the divots?
Yeah, well...
Do you need a revised plans minute, Tony?
No, so I think what I'd recommend to the board, given sort of the uniqueness of this circumstance, is to have this gentleman consult with the engineer to verify that what he's proposing will suffice for the rainwater mitigation.
That's fine, I think that's reasonable.
And discuss what they need from you regarding management of stormwater during the...
And that's the town engineer.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, and what's that gentleman's name?
Scott Sluter.
Scott Sluter. We will send him to you.
Oh, okay, you'll send me what I need.
And you decide to go with the cobbles, you better check with him as well, because you may require a license from the board of selection.
Well, he's...
Because it's a road layout.
Oh, just to...
It's private.
Oh, it's a private road, no, forget that.
Oh, okay. Even... I'm just doing the edge, so that...
You're fine.
Yeah.
It's a private road, so you don't have to worry.
Do we need any other information? Is there a motion to close? Was there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. All right, we're closed, no more testimony to be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second. Second, Suzanne. Findings?
Findings, it's in an R.B. zone, overlay District Great Pond, no flood zone, no previous special permits. It's a 10,000 square foot lot, it's on a private road. Existing is 18.31 over 22.14. Proposed is 22.86 over 24.24. I am probably wrong again, but I have the height at 16.10. These plans were difficult for me to read, I had Noreen's magnifying glass out. There is a new septic coming. It's in an S&R overlay. There is a comp sheet here. It's a 240, 11384. No letters.
No opposition at the hearing?
No opposition at the hearing, and that's all I have.
Project is in keeping with the neighborhood.
That's all I have for findings.
More detrimental. Any additional findings? Conditions?
Conditions, all boards, and Noreen requested that he...
Yeah, work with the engineer regarding stormwater issues.
Work hours.
Standard work hours, numbering of the residents.
No additional structures, right?
Yep.
Was there a water line issue, or...
I think testimony was that... yeah, testimony was...
No, it was this one.
It's being upgraded, so...
Yeah.
And sleeved.
That would be... yeah, and sleeved, thank you. Anything else, Noreen? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, that's a vote. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up on our new hearings, we have 02824 Milbury, 87 Penzance Road, Woods Hole, requesting a special permit to allow accessory apartment on the second floor of the detached four-car garage.
All right, let's see what we have here. We have Cassandra Mellon Milbury, P.O. Box RKM. Ooh, Lynn Garnier, Pennsylvania? God only knows, I think I made a mess out of that. Applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240 6.6B of the Code of Falmouth to allow an accessory apartment on the second floor of the detached four-car garage. Property is located at 87 Penzance Road, in Woods Hole. And from town boards, we have water. The new apartment will need to have its own independent water service from the street into the foundation of the new dwelling. The water meter needs to be installed inside the unit, not in a crawl space. Please come to the DPW to fill out a water service application. Assessor requests inspection after final sign-off. Planning, the applicant has filed an SPR application with the planning board, decision is scheduled for the next meeting on Tuesday, March 26, 2024, and we have the planning board decision. Let's see, and we have engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Penzance Road is a private right-of-way in this area. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights away. And four, see attached review, we perform for the planning board for this project. Fire department, no comment. Building department, show first floor of garage egress for accessory apartment cannot be through the garage. Concom, no comment. Health has no comment, they have a suitable septic. Something else in here? Oh, that's the Falmouth site plan, and that's all I have.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Greg Jones, architect for Cassandra Mellon Milbury. I was before the board about four years ago, I think you were the only member back then, I think everybody else is new. We had built this garage, came back and asked for a special permit for plumbing in an accessory building. We were granted that special permit. Shortly after getting that special permit, Mr. Milbury passed away, and then COVID hit, so there was no work done, so the project went dormant, and as luck would have it, as the client called back about nine months ago, the three-year sort of period ran out. So we're coming back, it's a little different in that instead of sort of overflow bedroom space, which was the original application, Mrs. Milbury uses this as her Falmouth home. She has a caretaker who's in attendance tonight, he'll be staying in the apartment, so the thing that's different than the first time is that we've added a kitchenette, or a kitchen. We have met the requirements for the accessory dwelling unit, or accessory apartment, in that it's below 790 square feet. We have one bedroom, small kitchen, and a living dining area. We do have, currently, there's one stair leading to this door here to get out from upstairs. It also leads into the garage, and as the building commissioner noted, we'll be removing that door, because code says you can't have an exit leading into a garage. So you'll have to go outside and then go back in, but that's what the code says. We're also adding a second stair in the back of the building to comply with two means of egress. Other than that, there should be no... there will be no exterior changes to the building. The windows will stay the same, this is the inside as it stands today. In order to meet, in reality, this is about 1,100 square feet worth of space, but in order to meet that smaller than 800 square foot of the accessory apartment, we've brought the walls in as tight as possible to meet the 790 square feet. So again, no exterior changes. When we built the garage, a new three-bedroom septic was installed, there is water to the property, there's a water meter on the property already, there's sufficient parking, either... there's four cars in the garage, there's a half a dozen spots on the exterior. So that's it in a nutshell, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the board, start with you, Jerry.
Could you go back to, you lost me on...
Yep.
The garage door goes into the garage, and that's not an acceptable entrance.
Well, so...
You can put in another staircase or something.
So, since it becomes sort of an apartment, you need two ways out. So we already have one set of stairs that sort of traces along this exterior wall and dumps you out this door.
Okay.
But when you're standing in the foyer here, you can also make a right turn now into the garage proper with another door. But the building code says you can't have an egress way into a garage space.
Okay.
So that door, we're going to take out as part of the plans we're submitting, but we're also going to be building a second stair in the back that just dumps you outside.
Is that on these plans?
It's on those plans, yes.
Thank you. Frank?
No.
Mark?
Nothing, I mean, I'm familiar with the place, I actually painted the main house about 15 years or so.
Is that right?
Yeah, and it's quite similar to the garage that was there before.
Yeah.
But obviously, much newer. No, I have no issues, I didn't notice the stairs, but obviously, that's going to be taken care of, so, yeah.
So good luck. Thank you. It's always nice to be able to run back out to Penzance.
Yes.
For sure. Great site visit. I'm all set, thank you.
Is there any sprinkler system or anything?
No.
No. Great site, great.
There is a one-hour fire separation between the garage ceiling and the space, and the stair is one-hour fire enclosed, but no sprinkler.
Thank you.
Tony?
Excuse me, but the property owner, Mrs. Milbury, will be living there at least seven months?
Yes.
Will the house be rented?
It will not be rented, the house will be lived in by Mrs. Milbury and her caretakers, and the caretaker will be living in the...
So the owner is there at least seven months on the...
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any follow-up questions? Public comment? Seeing none. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, closed, no more testimony to be taken. Do we need any additional discussion? How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Motion to approve with conditions. Second, Suzanne. Findings?
Findings, it's in an R.A.A., flood zone AE16 and VE18. It's on 10.25 acres, it's a private road. 1.7% over 1.78%.
Density is not a issue.
Love that.
The main house is 280 feet long. I measured it.
What do we have, planning board, oh, that's... planning board issued a decision. It's a 240 6B. That's all I have for findings, not detrimental.
Put in the findings, testimony concerning the stairwell, testimony was that the... it'll be... code violation will be corrected in a second. Egress is being constructed. No opposition at the hearing, no letters of opposition in the file, very much in keeping with the architectural scheme out there.
Yeah.
Anything else?
There were two previous summary board hearings.
Yep, we can reference those.
The weirdness is already... the building's already in existence. I just put a note that, you know, other than the modification they're requesting, just do the same terms.
Yep, absolutely. Conditions?
You put the stairs in findings.
Yeah, well, yeah, we can condition, must comply with the building in terms of points of egress.
No. And you said the water units, I can't ask him, the water unit is going to be inside.
Yeah, it has to comply with the water.
The meter.
Has to comply with the water department's referral.
That's all, I'm good.
I don't think parking out there will be a problem.
Nope. Any else for conditions?
Per plans.
Per plans, yep.
Or the assessor requests...
Ah, yes, the assessor, the sign-off.
Yeah, we did all boards, I think, didn't we?
Yeah, and has to comply with the accessory bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, that's a vote. Thank you very much. All right, last hearing, our new hearing this evening, was 03024 Friedman, 12 Sunset Point Road, North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow an addition of a guest suite above the existing garage and connecting breezeway, increasing lot coverage by structures.
Okay, we have Jonathan D. Friedman and Christina Richard Friedman of 1001 Marina Drive Apartment 401, Quincy, Mass. Applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240 102A of the Code of Falmouth to allow an addition of a guest suite above the existing garage and a connecting breezeway, increasing lot coverages by structure. The subject property is 12 Sunset Point Road, North Falmouth, Mass. And let's see what we have from the Water Department. There's something for me here. I think it's coming up. First of all, we have assessors need inspection prior to sign-off again. Okay, here's water. The new guest suite will not need an independent water service from the water main to the foundation. However, the existing three-quarter inch copper water service to the existing home will need to be upgraded to a one-inch PE. The meter pit will need to be removed, and the meter will need to be installed inside the home, not in a crawl space. After installation, Falmouth Water will need to do a survey to ensure the new water service is installed downstream of the water meter. Fire department, no comment. Health, existing septic system capacity is four bedrooms. There appears to be three bedrooms in the main home, with one proposed over the detached There appears to be three bedrooms in the main home with one proposed over the detached garage. An installation permit will be needed prior to the connect, prior to connecting the plumbing from the detached structure to the existing septic system. Building. Breezeway requires a foundation. No foundation shown on plan. And engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Sunset Point Road is a private right-of-way in this area. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, this project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or abutters or public rights away. Four, a dry well is shown for the roof as we typically recommend. Five, given the proposed work area and lot grade, it appears that erosion and sedimentation should not be an issue with normal construction practices. However, the contractor should be held responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls if conditions change. We recommend the following condition be included. Quotations, "Construction activity shall not cause erosion to or sedimentation into the abutting properties of the right-of-way." End of quotation. That was engineering. Concom, no comment. Planning, no comment. And that's what we have.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Paul McGarvern. I'm a general contractor that will be applying for the permit on the project, and I'm here representing the owner, assisting the owners, John and Christina Friedman. The project is very straightforward. It's an existing garage, a single-story garage that's on the property, and the intent, the existing house, as was mentioned, is a three-bed. It has approval for a four-bed septic, and the intent is to add a guest suite to the upper level, to add an upper level to the garage. The footprint is not changing. The only change to footprint is adding a breezeway from the garage back to the house, which is four feet wide and maybe 15 feet long, connecting from the garage to the house. So the intent is basically for overflow from the house for family and friends, grandkids, kids and grandkids, to have an additional bedroom. Over, so it's a one-bedroom. There is a little living space and a little den and a bathroom. There's a wet bar, so there's no cooking facilities in it. Approximately, the footprint of the existing garage is approximately 620 square feet. So like I said, it's not, the walls of the existing garage remain, they just, it's extended up an additional floor. So for the most part, very little change, no work, no extension to the footprint apart from, apart from a breezeway connecting the existing structure back into the main part of the house. For the most part, that's it. I open to any questions.
What questions? Start with you, Jerry.
No questions.
Frank? Mark?
Pretty straightforward, Noreen.
I had no questions.
Will you address the comment from the building department about the foundation?
So actually, and I, they were on the drawings that we submitted electronically. They may not have been on the drawings.
Oh, okay.
That I submitted in paper format. They are on S 1.0. It actually calls the breezeway post-foundation detail. So the breezeway is not enclosed. It's on piers. So there, and the pier detail is on that.
Just like a walkway.
Yes.
So I did correspond with the building commissioner today, just to verify, and that control of his proceeded, the.
Well, he did.
Perfect, yeah.
I think that's all I have.
Start.
Just simple things. Ridge height's 26 feet 1 inch.
That's correct.
And you have interior stairwell and an exterior stairwell for egress.
Correct, for the second means of egress, yes.
I'm so bad at things.
That's it, seems like a nice project.
Tony?
Well, are there any intentions other than using this as a guest room where it will be rented?
That is not the intent. The house currently is not rented. This is just an additional, additional space for a family and friends.
Family and guest use.
And friends, yeah.
As regards the, you have a four-foot, eight-inch setback on the side of the house, and you're putting these circumstanced in. You're very close to the lot lines. Are you creating something that is going to have an adverse effect on the abutting neighbor because you have a set of stairs, you're leaning, obviously, and it's going to be much higher than the existing garage? And you're very close to the abutters.
So where the stairs is, is not on the four-foot side? There's, it's on the 17-foot side?
Yes.
So, and it's a spiral stairs to minimize the impact of it on the footprint of the stairs. It's certainly, the landing point is higher, slightly higher than, it's at the.
But it'll never be big enough to be sitting there.
Sorry.
It'll never be, the landing will never be large enough.
No, no, no. It's literally walking out, no, no, just walking out onto it and down. It's purely for to satisfy the second means of egress. Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other follow-up questions? Public comment?
Last guy standing. Thank you. My name is Seth Buckley. I live at 2 Sunset Point Road, so we're an abutter on the four-foot side. These guys are great neighbors. We love them. We're excited about their project. It's not my intent to muck this up or delay their project in any way. But we had a concern, which I believe they've already addressed, right? Just wanted to kind of make it a public record. So the second story looks right, would look right down on our patio area and our grilling area where we spend all our outdoor time. We're full-time residents there. And they were considerate enough to reach out to us a couple of months ago and say, here's what we're doing with the project, you know? We respect your privacy. We don't have any plans to put windows on the second floor looking out onto our property. If they do, maybe it'd be a high transom window in the bedroom or something. Perfectly fine with that. If they want to put a little window in the bathroom that looks out on our property, that's fine. Our concern is not with the Friedmans at all. It's with maybe someone who buys the house from them at some point, which decides, who decide they want to put in a big-picture window in that second floor looking over our property because it really does look straight down on the property. So I just didn't know if there's any way to put a condition on the variance that limits the windows on the second story facing our house. I have no idea. I just thought I'd bring it up.
I'll defer that to you, Noreen.
So I think there's currently no windows shown on the plan, right? So what we would say is that they're constructing according to a plan and that, yeah, they want to.
Modification.
A future modification to add windows, they would have to come back and.
Can condition that. Well, yeah, we'll come back to you a second just to talk about that. Any other comments, sir?
No. Hopefully, we're still friends. But no.
John Friedman and my wife Christina. What Seth just said, we really don't have a problem with as long as, if in the future we decided to put a transom in, in the bedroom upstairs there on the second floor, or a small window in the bathroom, we'd like to still be able to do that. But other than, you know, if you're going to put a condition on, if those could be excised out of the condition, we don't have any plans to do that currently, but we want to keep that option open should we decide to do that. Because if, if, you know, that's the direction the sunlight comes, so the transom would be nice for the bedroom and for a bathroom to have a small window, just to air it out sometimes is a nice touch. But again, we don't have an intent to do that now, and we appreciate what Seth is saying about in the future. So we're not adverse to a condition being added so long as it gave us the ability to do that transom in bathroom in the future, should we decide to do that.
My question, I guess I'll float to the board, would be, we can put a condition in regarding the windows, and then, I don't know if we want to delegate to the zoning administrator that she can administratively approve.
That's a good idea. I mean, an alternative would be submitting a revised plan that shows a future window and transom.
Sure.
As a part of what I think this may be.
Yeah. I mean, I think you could put a note in the file about what the abutters' concerns are, and that if you choose to put some small window in, it would just be an administrative change that would come through us, just to make sure that, like he points out, you're not putting in a glass wall.
Understood, yeah.
So Tony? Bathroom?
It sounds like, it's not, I see it's not on the plans, but this is the tail end of the rafters where you have a header issue. And if you're going to do this, this is the time to do it. Why not resubmit the plans and just have your building do it now? I mean, this is, you're going to have to head in there across these.
It was not an act of policy. Transom idea was kind of an act of policy.
Well, at least with the.
You got to tell your building to change.
It's easy to frame it now.
Yeah.
With the water, the header and stuff like that, but again, a transom, so it probably wouldn't start up until 54 inches high or something like that. They saw maybe 16-inch-high windows on that, from there up.
We like our privacy also, so we don't want him looking up at us.
So what you have, if they move this, you'll be able to start your construction. And then if you make a change to add in a window, it's a remarkable change to us.
Be an administrative change.
Right. And, you know, if you show it to your neighbor, all the better, so that everybody's on the same page.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, that works out.
Okay.
That works out.
That's okay.
Why not an awning window? I mean, they work better in a bathroom.
Transom in size, but you could use an awning window, absolutely.
Because you can leave them open all the time and nothing ever blows in.
I think the intent with the transom is more the scale and the height.
An awning window, any size you want.
Type of window.
All right.
Another issue solved.
Yes. I think the board is also appreciative that when neighbors and applicants work together, it's our hearings and decisions much easier to come to. So thank you. Any additional questions? Is there a motion to close?
There is.
One second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are closed. No more testimony will be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Motion to approve with conditions. Second is Suzanne. Findings?
Findings. It's in an R B zone. The lot size is 13, 977. It's on a private road. It's a 240 10 2A. Existing is 21.0 over 23.68. Proposed 21.7 over 23.9. I heard you ask the height question.
26 feet 1 inch.
Yep. Thank God I got that from Scott.
Why are you making notes?
I don't get it on my own. We have a comp sheet here. We had one person that had comments regarding windows. No letters of opposition or?
One neighbor spoke, not in opposition, had a concern.
Comments.
Concerning windows placement, and that will be conditioned to the.
Yep.
Main house is three bedrooms and.
Central.
One and a half. A suite of four. Septic.
Yep.
Any other findings? Conditions?
Assessor?
Yep.
Work hours.
Work hours.
Work hours. The 1-inch water line?
All-town referrals.
Yeah, all-town referrals, just do it that way.
I have something a little finding. A testimony was that they may submit a revised plan. The zoning administrator will be authorized to administratively approve the addition of window, uh.
Transom.
Transom, thank you, transom windows to the plan.
I think we should probably just leave it anything in case he does decide not to do transom.
Fine with me. I don't, I have no problem allowing it.
Should we just leave it open, maybe?
Just allowing it in terms of the placement of windows and materials.
Yeah.
The zoning administrator can administratively.
Just in case you find something else.
Is that everyone okay?
Yeah, it's a builder.
Yeah, it's a builder, yeah.
No cooking, as stated by the applicant.
No cooking facilities.
No rentals, as stated by the applicant. And that's all I have for conditions. I don't know if anyone else.
Jerry, anything else?
Nothing.
So, Noreen? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's a vote. Thank you for your patience this evening.
Very much.
Continuing on the agenda to open meeting, we have number one, voting of minutes. Are we, what are we tabling tonight, Noreen? Table everything, all right. Zoning administrator updates.
We've been waiting all night, Noreen.
I know, I know. You're just dying. What can I find to tell you about?
We can skip the groans and listen to this.
Can you update on some hockey game?
Training session with town council on the open meeting law and conference that occurred on this past Tuesday, April 30th. Most members were in attendance. For anyone who missed the training, a future date will be planned for June 2024, just so that everybody's up to date on best practices. We also, in the future, have a proposal for a Y P C A that was submitted to the planning board to be cited at 487 Burke Hill, which, as you may know, is next door to 511 Burke Hill, now known as Josiah Path, which is a 40B that community folks approved and is